Beyond ten P M, the board may hear additional testimony or presentation. Upon a motion adopted by the board to extend the time frame for this matter. If the time limit to the board action is not extended by an applicant on a matter not concluded by ten P M, the matter be voted upon based on the evidence before the board at the time such action is taken. Persons wishing to make public comment must state the name, address, and provide the providing testimony on an application or ordinance or a matter to be voted on the board, they may be administrated, administered, and hold if testimony is to be given.
Rise, Mr. Sulu, to the flag, please.
Completions to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from April fifteen, twenty twenty-four?
Motion to approve.
Hold on, please. Ms. Lassier? Yes. Mr. Banks?
Yes.
Mr. DeFalco?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Adler?
Yes.
Mr. Polly?
Yes.
Mr. Duffin?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
New business, application twenty twenty-four dash two, site location fifteen East Monroe Street, applicant F. F. Lanny LLC, forty-two Eli pine lane, Lumberton, New Jersey, lot eighty-four, lot sixty-five, minor subdivision.
In the board's reference, I did review the notice provided by the applicant. This is an application for a minor subdivision with variance relief, and the notice provided was timely and specific, so the board must have your station.
And for the question, it was reported, I mean, from singer, I represent the applicant, that point, the LLC. As you so indicated, this is a, an application for minor subdivision. There is presently a duplex constructed on the property. The board specifically, professionals have requested that the variance be applied toward the side yard. At the time that the duplex is constructed, there's an unofficial determine that no variances were required, but upon further review, the professionals believe that a side yard variance is required should be updated application included, a request for a side yard variance. That's part of the subdivision application. President of the witness, this is your name, Frank Valente, would you ask a few questions?
Spalente, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, know the truth, and nothing but the truth before this board?
Yes.
Could you speak your name for that?
Frank Valente.
And as a part of the argument, the owner of fifteen East Monroe Street, the person who owns lot sixty-five, lot eighty-four, and the tax now, we can't for now.
Yes.
And I, have you constructed a, a duplex?
Yes.
As a real desire to subdivide the duplex to allow you to sell each unit to a third party?
Yes.
And as far, in prior to constructing the duplex, did you obtain all building permits necessary for the construction of the duplex?
Yes, I did.
And have you been issued C Ns yet? What's the status of construction?
Not yet, I got a set of final inspections for the, for the duplex, but all the instructions.
And the property is serviced by public water and sewer?
Yes.
And separate water, sewer lines exist for each unit as subdivided?
Yeah, there's separate water, sewer, and gas to, to each side of the duplex.
And prior to construction, was there previously improvements on that lot?
So prior to construction, so little background, there was a, a single-family house on location. So there was gas, water, and electric already to the house, as well as sewer. So that was then demolished, and then the, the property, I guess, a couple years later was put up for sale, you know, for the lot itself.
And you bought it to make a lot?
Yes.
There was also a small concrete slab in the rear portion of one of the, one of the two lots, is that correct?
Yes, if you're looking at it from the street to the left, in the backyard, there was an existing concrete pad that was about, I'm trying to remember, fifteen by twenty, so it was fifty-six times a concrete pad.
Are you utilizing that concrete pad?
Yeah, I had put a ten by ten shed on, on that existing concrete pad.
And have you expanded the concrete pad at all?
I did.
You did not?
No.
I'm going to through the professionals' reports to respond to some of the questions that they may have. I'll start with the fire report. Property's in the M R D district, correct?
Right.
And they proposed duplex, and, and applied for is permitted use within that zone.
Yes.
The request for a variance. Before I get there, the, the zoning criteria in that zone allows for by area of twenty-five hundred square feet, correct?
Yes.
And you're proposing two lots, each one measuring eighty-five hundred plus, and a second, I'm sorry. It's just a lot, anyway.
We're telling you that.
So they're each thirty-six hundred and sixty-five feet, thirty-eight seconds, so they're both going more.
Yes.
Lot width, required twenty feet, and you're proposing thirty-four feet, correct? So lot depth front yard, anything is, all of your bulk standards are compliant, are compliant except for side yard for, for those lot sixty-five, correct?
Yes.
Twelve point nine feet is required, and you're proposing twelve.
Yes, it's twelve now.
Twelve, okay. And it was interpreted prior that the side yards net the order, but it was determined for the rear portion of the side, the lot width, the rear portion of the lot.
Yes.
Professionals are now measuring it from the front of the lot setback, which requires a setback.
Right, yeah, you just measure from the front now, requires the variance.
As a good application, but.
Yes.
You've also requested design waivers from your ordinance, correct?
Yes.
The two duplex, how many bedrooms are each duplex?
Each side has three bedrooms.
So that would require two, two off street park, right? Propose, are you proposing that two parts park?
Yes, that was provided.
Okay. Would you describe the onsite lighting that's proposed for the duplex?
So on either side, the driveway goes pretty close to the front deck. Part, part of the driveway is close to the deck. There's four recess lights on either side, LEDs, which are, you know, extremely bright, which now illuminate part of the, the driveway. So if somebody were to park at nighttime and were to get out, that light from that recess light under the overhang would be, would provide enough light for them to get out.
Could you take a pause for a second?
But you're going to go, because it's too high, sorry.
Wait a minute.
Yeah, sorry.
I need to see her.
Yes, yeah. Trying to wait before you got.
Just for a way, because there is another, oh, variance, parking in the rear.
As a part of, you're aware that there's, the ordinance requires parking in the rear, there's an alleyway where streets get to the rear of the property, correct?
Yes.
Is there any access to the rear of this property?
Yeah, so there's, there's no access in the rear. That's why we, we put it in the front, because there's no alleyway or, or street in the rear of the property to be able to access the back, or else I would have put the driveways in the back rather than, than the front.
And when you submitted for construction, you submitted showing the parking in the front?
Yes.
And then as far as green space for off-street parking, I do have revised plans on it. Provides the plan and the engineer's decision. And the computation shows that the, it is greater than thirty percent, I'll have representation, that green space is greater than thirty percent, so I don't think that bulk apartment would be required there. We also, we will submit, well, I have to, I have revised plans with me that will respond to general comments. One, where the survey would be updated to show current conditions. Sidewalk, present in the plan, in case a new sidewalk encroaches into the front of lots, we will provide access, easements across the front of each lot, if required. Plan has been modified to show the parking stalls adjacent to these one and a three. The number four, as a property in the field survey, it's been, first survey.
Yes.
And so. The only encroachment is the side yard that has been part of this application.
Right.
Trees. First, this much, existed between the sidewalk and the property line. Do you personally allow us to install some of these trees?
I do, so prior to buying this property, there were three trees that were essentially dying, that were entangled in the wires, kind of fits him last name, but Tim, the director of Public Works, I was in conversation with him to ask him if he was gonna have them taken down, because I know he's, he coordinates with P S E and G to take care of those trees. He told me they, they were taking care of them, so by the time I bought the property, started construction, they were taken all the way down to, I guess, maybe six foot, but cut off, so it was like a, essentially like a face stump that I just had to finish removing. So that was taken care of prior to, to me starting construction and, and purchasing the, the property.
They were removed by public service?
But, but, I'm sorry, they were removed by P S E and G.
Now, what trees did you take down on the lot during construction?
So there were three large trees. If you're looking at the property from the street, it would be to the left. They were pretty huge trees. There were three of them that were kind of right on the property line of the property's old white street. So I figured for construction, take them down so that way, and God forbid if these storm pumps, they're not taking out a white street house, or taking out a house that I was in the building. So I, you know, I just thought that was a good idea prior to now getting into it, building it, saying I should have took these down in the beginning rather than, you know, than after.
Are you aware of the thousand thousand tree ordinance?
I was not.
You're aware of the now?
I'm aware of the now.
And your plan to show street trees being planted in front of each of the?
In front of both properties, yes.
Okay, and are you in agreement that if the ordinance requires you to contribute to the tree fund, that you're in agreement to do so?
Yeah.
Testify with respect to the veterans, so two vehicles for each, each side, three, three bedrooms on each.
On each unit, yes.
Now, the concrete sidewalk, does it extend to the eastward property, correct?
Yes, so the, the concrete sidewalk out front was pretty, pretty well damaged, and I'm assuming it was from those trees, three trees that were on Monroe Street. So during construction, after the house was done, we replaced that section of sidewalk just because it was that big. But to the right, there's maybe a, a six-foot piece of sidewalk between, if you're looking at it from the street, the, the right driveway and the, the other driveway that comes all the way out, part of the old Gazelle moving storage, that I did replace. So, and I, I should have just did it when I replaced the existing sidewalk, but it was an oversight on my part, so, you know, I, I take care of.
You'll extend the sidewalk to the property line?
Yeah, to the, to the property line. I mean, I, I'm gonna extend it to the other driveway. Because Windsor's own that property now, so I'll extend that over to their driveway, where that comes out, the old Gazelle's moving storage onto, onto Rose Street. Not only what it's called now, or else I would call it the, the new name, I just know that's the old.
The process that I hit on, because when I was out there, in that moment, it's probably not done yet, but you're saying you're gonna do it, but I guess my concern would be what the slope and the bend.
Yeah.
And it might be more than, you know, it might turn into a ramp.
Yeah, and that's what I, I saw that remark from you when I was out there earlier today, just to make sure. And if it was that further, I would definitely be concerned, but it's that far up to the, to the road, to where it's, it is kind of minimal as far as the slope there. I mean, the further back you go, the bigger the pitch it is, but it, this is closer to the road and, and the, the pitch is, is minimal to where, you know, I can't see it being an issue.
When I was there, it seemed like it would be an issue. So, I mean, are you gonna provide an, an as well, an eye for the sites? I mean, you've got one, but it's gonna need to be updated.
Updated, yeah.
So we'll be subject to review and pull by the board's engineer as to.
Yeah.
Side walk here.
You've heard, you testified previously that the water store now exists, pretty, pretty few.
No, no, just for the, just for, again, if you're looking at from the street, the right side, water, sewer, and gas were existing there. The left side, I had to put in new water, sewer, and gas.
So it'll be, it'll be you in the service separately?
Yes. But like we were saying, that the, I guess if you're familiar with the, the tines were already in the yard, rather than having to dig up the street and go into the yard. Before, you know, the ones to the right, the ones to the left, we actually dig up the street and go into the yard.
And speaking of that, did you, as requested by, or pointed out by the engineer, mill the street, the curb, the curb?
Yes, yeah, so the side that, the side that was, that we had to tie with P S E and G, water and sewer, and same thing with those other three, had three openings there, and Mr. Alamo requested, whatever it's called, that I mill it and, and replace that section just because there was three openings, caused like, like multiple speed humps. So I took care of, of doing that, so that way it's a smooth, you know, a smooth ride down on Rose Street past that, past those three openings.
And did you take a picture of that?
I did.
And is that, this picture the?
Yeah, this is the, I don't know if you guys, do you want to pass it?
Yeah, okay. A.
One?
A one.
Which comment were you addressing?
I was hoping ahead to Mr. Alamo to tell me.
Right.
Yeah, we're.
Which, which comment did I?
It's, whose comment, number? Sixteen. That's all the questions I have of the plan, of your board's plan, or just comment a few months ago.
Well, let's, yeah, let's just talk about them. So, it's just for the board's application, the reason that they're required to give this side yard variance is because of block lines are irregular. It's wider in the front than it is in the back. So when you take the whole lot width, the, the front thirty percent, it's gonna give you a bigger number that he reaches in the back, so that, that's why that is. I think, you know, it's a classic C two variance, you know, to shape the lot, so. The other one was with the driveways, there, the ordinance reads that you should put it in the backyard if you do have access to an alley or drive. Otherwise, you could put the driveway to the backyard. Now, you could put it in the front yard, and I think there's some reasonable reasons for that, because if you did put the driveways on either side of the lot, now you're increasing the amount of impervious kind of reach, you have to have impervious area in the back to accommodate the park. So it's, it's a reasonable request to get a bulk variance for that, to put it in the front yard. It's the most efficient and effective way. And I guess the question with the sidewalks, I mean, one of the holes of the M R D zone is to improve the street scale. So I, I didn't see your plan, but you're gonna extend the sidewalk. I mean, I noticed some questions about aprons and things like that, is that gonna be a, you know?
Pass it back to the, because. So the photo that was just provided to us, there's a kind of in my letter about the fact that the plan shows, doesn't match what's out there in the field. And so you've got a plan where you show like square in front of the, of the duplex for the parking. But the parking is actually in two separate sections on either side of the duplex.
Correct, it's not one big huge.
Yes.
Square, where now you're gonna have an issue with, you know, whether it's parking with either car or, or even having just grass in the middle, so that way, you know, you have a greater.
Well, I understand that, but I guess the problem is you're bringing, you're not, the board is not actually getting a plan to show you, show them what you actually constructed in the field and/or what you proposed to put into the field. So it would have been helpful to the board, I think, to have seen an updated plan before we came here, show where the parking is.
I think your photograph, is that your report?
Well, I mean, so the other thing is, I don't, you say it's two spaces, I, and there's nothing, I don't have a plan that shows the, the, the parking, I don't, you know, so.
Like I said, I have revised plans delivered to me this morning, and I'll, I'll leave them.
Again, where here we are, and we normally send, send plans in before we come to you.
I did submit a comment on it, and I will submit revised plans.
Yeah.
If you, if you wanna look at it now, I have revised plans printed, but if you wanna look at it now.
Regarding this, Frank. It, it looks to me, from when I was out there, that there were two areas where there was trench work done. I'm not sure, I can see obviously they took care of this.
Yes.
I'm not sure what is going on here.
Yeah, that was P S E and G on at the time.
So we need to take care of that. I mean, I'll go out and deal with it, take a look.
I mean, if you wanted, I have an extra copy of the revised plan. Ask around.
I'd like to see.
Yeah, yeah, if you have it, you know, sort of. Yeah, it shows that, you know, the two driveways separation, you know, with the, yeah.
Yep.
You know, the grass in the middle, so.
So for any documents submitted tonight, exhibit A one should be submitted to the board secretary. And now, I think Marcus is A two, these are updated.
Yeah, and then you see there too, it also shows the, the lightings in the front, you know, satisfy the.
Move the sidewalk now?
The sidewalk should go right back where, where it was initially.
May I say this, it's like there's a, a, a service wall. Is that the sidewalk?
As all the plan, I'm gonna do Mr. Alamo's report.
What about the? Did you get testimony as to what the actual? Lot depth is, because it's blank, I don't know, what's the lot depth?
I mean, it's.
It's just a, honestly.
Hundred and fourteen feet for both?
Uh, it's just about sixty-five, sixty?
Twenty point zero eight, one fourteen.
Yeah, one thirty, one twenty.
Just you did mention the waivers, right? Off screen, parking, and then also the encroachment, six foot side, above.
Yes, we requested waiver back on.
You, you select a tree for the front, you have to show two trees, you have a.
Yeah, I didn't put one in yet, I was gonna, you know, I had a recommendation. Yeah, I definitely will take them and, and deal with a local farm, you know, you know, racket to it.
And you might have to move the one on, that's lot sixty-five, one two.
Somebody would move it right down?
Utility lines there.
Here.
So, right. Forward without a tree, no action on the locations, so I know it's.
Okay, respect to Mr. Alamo, letter, page two, requesting waivers. Checklist items dealing with, and J D P, door letter of exemption, writing copy of an application, no applications been made, as applicant specified, property was approved by a single-family owned with existing slab, and it looks like a shed on top. With, with, I guess, as we found. Construction permits were issued, duplex has been constructed, and that's a, checklist items to raise.
So I asked, so that's the money here. So one of those checklist items is related to whether or not there's any structures in the. Yeah, I thought there was something on here about being in the flood plain. I guess that's not a checklist, so you have to.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not concerned about that, but I am concerned about. So the comment, uh, you were, so one of those. Again, submission waivers, rating fourteen, existing structures, twenty sixteen. Doing this, offset, offset improvement, according to speed, please leave the area in the way to clear flood elevation. The other question, the applicant with the subdivision filed by me, providing fees and closures to your professionals. And, I infer said, dealing with parkways, required allowing, during construction, fit of parking. It seems the revised plan, as it is, that the flood limit line from FEMA shows to put on the FEMA map, has built elevation, spot point four zero on a concrete slab, is above base flood elevation eleven point two, I'd say FEMA map here, for if you put a dump required for additional shed.
Where's that now? No, I see the note, but, I mean, so you're building a shed. No, I see the note, but, I mean, so you're building a shed in the flood plain, right? You're, do you say, you're saying that the, the slab is already above the flood plain elevation?
Correct, that's what these, that's what Mr., uh, Major indicates on his plan.
So that's what I was talking to, about Timmy's about, about this existing concrete, about, you know, the district path where it was based upon, uh, you know, his research to be existing flood plain, this was above that, uh, so that way, you know, obviously, if the issue got, if it happened, uh, if it doesn't, but if it is, it's above that, that flood plain.
Okay, okay. Um... So there's something that we're requesting, that we testified that some number of off tree, off street parking, that's required, um, the two vehicles are, are provided for a hundred inch block for each three bedroom unit and two models are tires, um... The revised plan should show the site purpose as it currently exists, number four, um, I did receive red documentation for the taxes, such as to block numbers, lot to buy notice, uh, there, uh, submitted deeds for review, uh, we will report by deed, and I do have closure reports, and I'll submit those, uh, with the, uh, with those deeds. Uh, parking in the front of the unit, um, again, we testified there are three bedrooms, and sufficient parking on site is divided, um, number seven, uh, we testified as to why the parking is in the front and not in the rear of the property, uh, so we are requesting a fine waiver for that requirement, um... And we also requested a six foot buffer for the, uh, for, uh, driveways to the sidelines, why it's not sufficient, sufficiently wide is permitted, um, I think that's, I think that brings us three, paragraph eight, what's the other?
Route pattern.
Probably work.
Um, so EK.
So, the elevations, we think that the stormwater is going down towards, uh, Monroe Street, uh, this, what they can testify as to, this is drainage and very heavy storms now, including water.
Yeah, so the house is sit, sitting up a little bit, uh, above the street, so if you're looking at it from the street, the driveway is pitched, uh, towards the road, so if you're not been there during, during a couple of heavy storms and, and it all rains down to Monroe Street, and the water will, you know, uh, follow the, the curb line down, you know, the, within the contour of the street down towards Pine, so it'll come down and then head towards, uh, Pine Street. But no, there's, hasn't been any puddling in the driveways, it's, it's all pretty well pitched towards the street to where, you know, there's not an issue with anything going towards the house or, or ponding in front of the, either, either house.
So, um, first you mentioned curb line, um, I don't believe there was curb installed, was there?
No, no, if, if you look at the curb there, it's existing, it's not a, you're traditional.
It's the ground, it's the slate curb.
Yeah, it's slate curb.
But you constructed a drive, two driveways, you put, putting depressed curb in, and then the asphalt from your driveway extended into the right way, and that was my concern, um, and I would need a plan showing me, so if your, your asphalt's going past the curb line, water might pass, might go by it, but you're also pushing the water out of the street.
Right.
Now, now cars have to drive through that.
So, um, and I, and I know this was just given to you, this new, um, plan that, uh, that Major had done, and he had put on there to cut that back, um, so that, um, cut that blacktop that is going into, uh, into Monroe Street, cut that back, so there is a lip there, so that follows the boundary of Monroe Street, so that there is no, uh, no issues with what we were talking about there, so it would be, uh, and it's, I don't know how he explained it on there, exact, or which...
Well, so there's another issue that I have a problem with, in that, that he's not an engineer, so he shouldn't be putting details or notes on the plan for, for progress improvements, has to be done by an engineer, um, and, um, or not, right, um, now, also, cutting asphalt, I mean, without having a concrete curb there of some sort, eventually, that asphalt's gonna peel off, peel, peel down.
Right.
So, I mean, are you gonna, gonna, you gonna put a concrete curb in when you do that?
Yeah, I mean, it, it wasn't the thought, but I could definitely put a concrete curb in, so that way, it's holding the blacktop back, yes, and then putting the, uh, uh, making sure the water isn't coming into the driveway and disturbed in the, the blacktop, so it's a buffer, you're saying, between the, you know, the existing driveway and...
And the, and the street.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, look, crossing.
Right, the concrete that...
Oh, it's a depressed, a depressed curb.
Right.
Typically, it's called a driveway, um, so, um, I'm not sure if I can handle this, but, you know, the, I know there's another issue about the driveway in this way, in that, you know, you're, you're using that driveway now as pedestrian access, um, before, there was continuous concrete sidewalk, and now, now people have to drive, probably walk across part of that sidewalk, I mean, that driveway.
Right.
And so the slopes of those driveways can't be more than two percent cross slope, so you can see that on a plan, so the, within that, within that right, within that sidewalk area, you know, you extend it across, show that it's less than two percent.
Right.
Otherwise, yeah, otherwise, yeah, you know, you should have, I mean, sometimes, a lot of times, driveways are built with a, a concrete apron.
Right.
Right? And that way, we know what the slope is.
Yeah, so I have what you're saying, true, you're saying that, so that's the same pitch as the existing sidewalk there.
And it, any sidewalk has to be maximum two percent cross slope. So, um, this is acting as, as a pedestrian way, so it has to be two percent.
Right, yeah.
So you don't provide plans that verify that Mr. Lockwood...
It's gonna have, it's gonna have to put spot elevations on the driveway and the sidewalk.
Yeah, and I, I can do that as far as...
And really, if it doesn't meet it, then you're gonna have to review the driveway, right? I mean, I mean, you don't have to redo the whole thing, but it may end up having to cut and put a concrete sidewalk and, and a concrete apron going out to the street. But, you know, like typical, the side, the sidewalk can be a two percent, and then the apron can be a, a four slope, a steeper slope.
If it can't be the two percent.
Yeah, right. Um, that may be a waiver, I would say, cause I don't have any, I don't have a light, if I have, it should only be, um, how much lighting in it, but, you know, this is residential, so, I mean, it's kind of, it's an odd situation in that, you know, um, the ordinance applies, says you're supposed to have this minimum one percent, and it's residential, you know, so I would just say, grant a waiver for that. So let's say we requesting a waiver, we have...
Also a waiver for, uh, I don't know, H C, you know, with the front door, parking within the front door setback.
He hasn't, are we pressing D?
A D, right.
And E, I don't, I actually, I'm, I'm surprised, I'm surprised, I'm surprised, because E is our science numbers, so I would say it's probably not, absolutely, you know, any ordinance.
Uh, you're not proposing any curb in your hard, hard stops.
Waiver?
We actually, we're asking a waiver. Um... Ask for a waiver, paragraph G, internal trucking movements.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with these waivers.
Yeah, H C, revised plan, it do show the, the, uh, green area, come on sixty-five, sixty-five percent, sixty-five, I think, seventy-seven percent.
From number nine, we talked about.
Uh, just can you talk about, provide the, uh, needs of the pressing? Uh, whether it's... Twelve.
No?
We talked about, seven, uh, seven, I was like, seven in the sidewalk to the, uh...
Thanks for providing, updating survey.
Thanks for providing, yeah, seven. Uh, site triangles, we do have it shown on the revised plan.
Well, I don't know, that's a little, it couldn't be unless you had an engine on.
Um... So we'll show those, and we'll show you the driveway in detail. Go ahead and, uh...
I just have some files at that.
Uh, fourteen, spoke about fifteen, spoke about, you can, there's several, that's what I said, for certain services we require, um, sixteen, no, we spoke about seventeen, that's the final report.
So sixteen is there, will be done?
It's been completed, uh, A one, A one shows that it's been completed.
So, um, I'm not sure, I mean, this already got, lost my attention before we came, before the board, and I prepared, um, a sketch, I have to go recheck my sketch, um, I mean, typically, you know, what we're trying to avoid in town is having multiple openings in a row on a street, and, you know, cause they, you know, they, as a family, you know, over time, and so, you know, when they have something with three openings, they generally like to have the whole thing milled and paved, um, it kind of looks, I think what they did is they milled and paved this area right here, but then they just, um, these other two openings did a spot paving, is that correct?
No, so there was only one other opening, that was PSENG, because the old line that was going to the house was, um, I guess in such bad shape, it would have been, so there was only one, uh, opening for PSENG, uh, water and sewer were already in the yard, so there was no need to tie in there, it's only that one opening there.
So once again, the, the, the plan that I'm seeing, um, we're showing two, what appear to be two openings at gas, at gas mains, or that, for gas services, so you're telling me there was only one?
Well, no, no, there's, there was one versus what is now will be seventeen.
Yeah, but the plan, this, this plan is showing what appeared to be, um, a, a road opening at, at each of these gas services.
Right, that's what I'm saying, so, so they, when you're looking at it from the street, the left side had three openings, gas, water, and sewer, and then the right side only had one opening, gas.
Gas.
So, yeah, I guess it was just confusion, I guess, what we were talking, so, yeah, because like, the right side already had water and sewer in the, in the yard, so there was no need to open the road, cause both of them were, were existing in, in good shape.
From your recollection, the sketch that I provided to you, did it encompass the entire three openings?
Yeah, it was, that left side encompassed the PSENG, water, and sewer, all three of them are now milpaved and smooth.
So that, this got done as one, um, real opening?
Yes.
Okay, so it's not, it's not three, it took, you're right, uh, this would be...
Then there's the one opening from PSENG.
That would be shown on as-built plans that will be provided to you.
I would like to see it, you know, I mean, if I could see it on the field, frankly, that's more important to me.
We don't have to show it all.
Whatever way, yeah, there, you'll have to, this sounds like it.
We spoke about these smaller areas, and we request that certain parts be added in place.
Yeah, okay, so this is new market rate housing, because it, the, the lot was demolished, the old house was demolished, and two units were constructed, so they'll be, um, subject to an affordable housing contribution, the equalized says value of each unit. Cause it's market rate?
Okay.
Correct. Okay, so there's an ordinance and state law related to that, and also, um, as I understood the testimony earlier, there were, there's three on site, um, yeah, I think there's not there, there was a three ordinance, um, they were removed, he's gonna contribute to the, um, contract, tree, um, fund, um, but no, but no request for a permit was filed, so, I mean, that, that, that's income for fees to the township, so he should apply post something, what do you think?
I don't review tree rentals.
That's something that the permitting department agreed with.
Yeah, the other construction, I guess, is how, I don't need to, um, state tree.
I mean, it has to be applied for, and those are fees that would have been paid to the township, so as part of the tree compensation fine, they should pay the amount of fees, cause you would have done that, you know, so, I mean, it's mine, but I think that they should pay the fee to the tree, the tree rental.
And you're discussing that, it's a good figure.
Yeah, it's not hard. Um, at this time, we're gonna open it up for comments from the public, first row. Please remember to state your name and address for the record.
Let me take this out of the way.
Well, I'm gonna look for you.
I thought you wanted to review this.
Thank you. Um, Audrey Bingsinger, going to church.
Do you swear or return, because we, once we're, to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. Um, I am actually, I'm so good, um, that, I'm not, so I think, so I can give it to, um, Joe, like, actually, twenty, twenty minutes, I don't know, I didn't know if you needed them or not.
Can you tell us what they are?
Steven?
Can you tell us what they are?
Yeah, absolutely, um, as I go through, I, I will.
Just cause I don't want a petition or anything like that, these are all photos or something?
They are photos, one is of the original photo of the lot before anything was built on it, and then, um, the others are of, um, pre, uh, well, mid-construction... And then, um, the others are of, um, pre, uh, well, mid-construction, and then, um, current, current, current construction. Um, uh, so, um, I am, uh, here to, uh, say that, um, I, um, would like to, uh, come very much in support, in concept, um, of approval of the subdivision. But with some conditions. Um, first is that I've heard tonight that there are as-built plans. I did go, um, uh, to Jill's office to see the plans, um, this week, and, um, there weren't any as-built plans. And so, that would have been really helpful for me to be able to see them, and I could not. And so, um, I was out there looking, and it was very difficult for me to be able to figure out, um, where we were going with this. So, uh, and I can imagine the board is not having the same difficulty that I was having, and professionals as well. And so, um, it would seem to me that, um, that maybe, um, that when the engineer creates those as-built plans, um, with all of the, um, grades and, and everything on them, um, and, um, finishes them up, that maybe, um, you know, that'll, that'll be more helpful for everybody. Uh, but anyway, um, this lot, um, was at grade for greenhouse. And as you can see from all the, um, dried leaves that are in our driveway next door, um, it did not ever cool water, did not have, um, it did not have water there in the driveway, which is our driveway next door, which is, um, the driveway that is between the telephone pole and, um, and, and that lot. Um, it's pretty dry, um, all the time, and, um, but they're great. And, uh, so, um, uh, I definitely, and we've had it for, um, twelve, thirteen years now. Um, and so, uh, definitely, we've, we've not had what we've been experiencing, uh, recently. The, um, the, the grade definitely, um, uh, so the grade has been raised. Um, I guess, um, Frank's raised it about, I don't know about the footer, so maybe a little bit more than that. Um, as you can see from the other photographs, where you see where there's the grass on the side and then it slopes off. Um, and, um, definitely, we are getting a lot of water, a lot of work in our driveway. Um, it's become a little bit of a leak when we have, um, heavy rains. Uh, so, I, um, I, I had a problem because of the slope, the downspouts are heading towards me. Um, and, and, and it's, it's, it's an issue, and it's, uh, um, and it's summer. So when it gets to be colder, it will be, it will be, of course, a problem. So, I'm concerned about the drainage, and the drainage is definitely not heading towards the road, it's heading towards us. And I'm, um, that, that's an issue. So, what I would like to see addressed is, um, that the, uh, subdivision would go forward, but with conditions. And the two conditions I would like to see is that we address drainage and getting it, um, away from me and where it belongs. Um, and as you can see, that, um, not only is the water coming towards me, but the soil is coming towards me. And I don't really know, I, I'm not sure what our, um, um, standards are, residential standards are, as far as, um, testing, uh, for residential standards of the soil in our home. But, um, a lot of the soil that was trucked onto there has ended up with me. So, um, uh, so I, I, I don't know, I mean, I know, I know what it is in the level of the plans, I'm just not really familiar with here. Um, so, uh, I, I, I guess my question is, um, maybe the conditions should be, um, about the soil hanging on the site and, and, um, and how we're going to address the drainage that's coming on to me. So those are the two things that I would like to see taken care of, otherwise, it sounds like a great woman, and a great, a great thing to be next to me, and happy with him.
Just for, um, purposes of.
A purpose of, that if it doesn't happen, that, um, you're in town, or way to go, if it's, if, I, I would like to see, I would like to see that our engineers, our engineers and their engineers are happy with the results of how the drainage is handled. Um, I would like that to be a condition of the subdivision. Um, and I would like it to be something that we are all, um, satisfied with. Um, and I'd like that, that, that level of satisfaction to be something that is, um, a prerequisite of, um, the approval.
So, does want to, just to, for, um, for our friends, you provide us with a series of four photos, object, we've labeled them, or you've labeled them, sector one through four?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you for that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, object number one appears to be Google Maps, and that's a true and accurate, uh, depiction of an image that you downloaded from Google Maps, correct?
Correct.
And two through four are true and accurate conditions of the site?
Existing, yes.
Okay, and is number two, the, the depiction during construction?
Yes.
And three and four are? Current?
Current, yes, current, yes.
One was, one was pre?
Accurate, yes, okay, yeah, that's right.
Thank you.
Okay.
Second row? Next row? Sorry, I can't see.
Does that require two or three blocks?
Do you s-?
Yes.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth or nothing but the truth before this board?
Okay. Um, my question is, is I guess, I mean, I, like, I see Frank's doing a lot of work in town, it does, nice work, it looks great. My question is, is, I guess all this, this plan originally come before the board, so our engineers looked at it, our planners looked at it, and now we're trying to get guarantees for certain questions. Who's responsible to actually make sure that the worst being found according to what people are saying was? Is it a construction official, is it like the engineers come, come across quite a few questions? That's a lot of the issues. Because I do know, back before you were here, on High Street, there was a building of historic importance, that I was trying to get, that the township gave to someone, and before it down, they would, they had to go before the state of New Jersey, cause it was a historic building. And all of a sudden, the building disappeared, the building that they got approved by the state of New Jersey wasn't built. So, my question is, I just wanna make sure that, you know, I guess each house needs two parking spaces. The one that they built, needs two parking spaces.
This one, yeah.
Okay. And I, I just, neither was, like, with the original plan, but I guess the parking spaces in the original plan were right in front of the house.
Yeah, they were adjacent to the, the street.
In the front of the house.
Perpendicular to the street, yeah.
And now that they're, they're going past the side of the house, the original was right in front of the house. There were four parking spaces in front of the house, now they moved them now.
Right.
So did they have to go to the planning board to change that construction?
Well, it was already done.
Did it before the king?
How they built it before they even changed it?
Yeah.
There's.
Unfortunately.
Somewhere.
Some interpretation of board meetings issue stuff. It wasn't done by Frank. I would just rest that.
No, no.
It's different, different.
I'm not saying, I'm, just my whole thing is, is, you know, I, you know, I just wanna see, I, I think Frank did everything does in straight.
This is a.
I just wanna, it's an additional thought, so if he has to remove things or change things. So how do we go about making it so that before this kinda stuff happened, or before, like, he, somebody did the sidewalk, or did the driveways, right? So how do we not know that needed, the sidewalks had to be continuous from the left to the right, and, and flat? And how do you get, how do you get done?
Normally.
So I guess you went out to inspect it, and then you found these deficiencies.
I did, after, after they made the application to the board. That's when I found the deficiencies, cause they made an application, so I went out there, we do an inspection, and when we had left. Um, now, the township does have, um, a requirement for sidewalk permit, and it does seem that one was filed. Um, and, so, the work, but now, the code official though, I think, has some kind of latitude to, um, to approve, you know, um, the improvements. Um, so, I mean, I'm not a code official, so I don't know what all these last two did, uh, but it did get done. Um, and if they hadn't come to the board, uh, I mean, I, I think that, you know, there would have been sidewalk out there that may, maybe didn't comply with, um, A A requirements, which was.
So basically, it's probably the code official that failed.
Yeah.
I don't wanna say.
Um, well, this is, I have.
This is a very unusual situation, and I'll keep my mouth shut, because I know what really went on. But nobody did not do their job. This is a very unusual situation, where there's a difference in interpretation of the code for the variance. They always had to come to subdivision. But, the variance thing is a difference in opinion and interpreting of, from the zoning officer to the board's professionals.
Okay, well, okay, so my only concern would be, how, why wasn't the engineer brought in earlier, when it was first brought, that we're gonna go to the town, so it's.
Because.
Cause we had paid an engineer a fee to.
I don't wanna speak for the applicant, but it's one lot. He wasn't thinking he's selling it as two different, two pro, two different people, that required a subdivision. After he built it, I guess. Cause he wants to sell it to two separate people. One lot.
It's not a half, that's, so exactly, it's basically a half double, like, two houses.
So there's two houses on one lot.
Right.
To sell to two separate people, you have to subdivide to get two lots.
Okay, cause most of the half-doubles aren't about the same person, so, you shouldn't have to go to half, probably sell to two different people.
It was, I know, I know, I, but you know what's gonna happen? I don't want anybody to get bashed.
No, I'm not trying to bash anybody, I just.
Well, I, I think the point is, if we're addressing the issues now, we're here, and there's misunderstanding, and I think it'll all be fixed, so.
Okay, one last question, evidently on the cage trackers.
Okay, this is not the cage track application.
Okay, if, I'm just stressing the board is.
We're only talking about what's on the.
Answer, so.
Thank you.
Next?
Good evening, I'm Kevin McHugh, I live at three twenty, Martridge, I'm sorry. Three hundred and fifty, uh, A List of Court, Manhattan, I thought.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth or nothing but the truth?
I do. I would just like to see this subdivision approved, I've been a member for, a member of the community, you know, for over twenty years, my wife, wife has been a lifelong resident of her family. Uh, the worst I've seen, that Mr. Fleming's done throughout the area, this is great, you know, which is, actually, a good word, a group of subdivision.
Anyone else? Anyone else for this application at all? All right, seeing none, we'll close this part for this application.
So he is, so, Mr. and, and, um, so as to file sidewalk, um, applications.
Can you keep, or bring it into the screen? Cause you're just gonna build it for him anyway, so it doesn't come out of the hatch. It'll come out of, out of the hatch, I don't mind. Just build any sidewalk to a design. I don't think there's a need for, okay, another application.
The only thing is, I think that, um, maybe we did for the subdivision on South Avenue, Tim Harrison was at the corner there, and put in sidewalk there, and I think they, you know, that's a. No, they, they filed, they filed a permit application, I think. I'm okay with being, with filing, you know.
Into the review of.
Yeah, man, I'm gonna get an absolute drawing, and, um, um, we, we didn't see it go in. So, I mean, normally, they file a sidewalk application, and then before they order sidewalk, we go out and look at the, uh, the box app, and, uh, you know, um, you know, I don't, no, depending upon what ends up happening with the survey, you know, there might be a need for, for revised sidewalk or revised data. Um, and that can be part of this, um, you know, our, our review. Um, and if that's the case, then it's, uh, anything that goes into the right of way has to be marked.
Mr. Sturridge, do you have any response, any, the comments that you made?
Hello, Mr. McHugh, stop. Uh, we'll be direct to the, uh, you know, drainage, uh, so it's obviously not stabilized, I think, you know, Mr. Fleming's wanting to be gra, plant the grass along the side yard, where you can now see dirt in one of the photos presented by, those here. Um, so I think that will alleviate the drainage issue, um, you know, for, especially with, like, a dry well at the end of the, uh, the, you know, the, the downspout, um, and how it can, it's very, it's a long drive up.
Um, we, the dry well's only gonna have the capacity to handle a certain amount of flow, um, depending maybe to put it in, you gotta put it in.
What I could do is tie it with a.
I just think we need to get it through the street instead of going to her.
Or maybe you do.
I agree with you.
Turb, walk in your driveway, just get it to curb and, and, and chill it out, driveway, or, I mean, the street, that, that probably.
French, why doesn't it just, since it's already dirt here, just tighten like a, a French train to the end over there? Have the downspouts go right into the. Last way I saw, something about a, a French train slash dry well kinda thing, but, you know, you know, that's not gonna handle all the flow. Um, so you're gonna have some flow cool to the ground at some point, um, and it should go to the street, I don't know how, may, maybe you can make a little swale of some sort in that grass area to get it to the street, um, but then again, you got, you're gonna have sidewalk in the way.
Well, my fault was.
I don't know, you know.
My fault was, I've, I've done some other progress, sorry.
Go ahead.
Um, taking both of those downspouts, um, bringing them out to, um, you know, the edge right here, and, uh, tying it into, uh, it's a drain pipe, that now would either go down here or up here. Probably better to go out to the front with, with a pop-up, where it all drains down to that, and then comes down, yeah, to the street, and it flows out of. Yeah, it's.
Man, I'm not crazy about problems, but that's. Or move that, then we keep that whole work in the pipe. Something like.
Right.
That gets it away from the rock, it gets.
Right.
See everybody's up?
Yeah, I'm sorry, now.
We're doing that suggestion.
It's all the. All of, and towards the street. Can't be in the right of way.
Right. But not right.
You guys, you gotta bring it close, as close to the right of way as you can, and then make sure it drains to the right of way. French, if they're up the sidewalk, they extend them to the driveway, why just go under with the soles to cut out the sidewalk? You might be in it, though.
Yeah.
Then they go right under it. Well. Cutting up at the end of the curb, which was out, the street versus. I'm not, I'm not supposed to, like, do the curbs.
Right.
That's, that's just not, uh, not modern, and we don't have the cover out here, you know, it's not.
We'll get the.
You can't move that out, it's only the. Right, yeah, I don't have, we're gonna be covered on the. Yeah, I don't have to look at the cover on the sidewalk.
Like I said, your options is rather than running down the edge of your driveway. You're driving slow, it's right half this road. That's like that.
Of course he doesn't hire. I don't know, he doesn't direct me, what he needs. I don't think he's necessarily, yeah, I think he needs to direct me. I think that's the problem. And of course that takes an engineer and you know, he doesn't have an engineer. No, he doesn't have an engineer, he doesn't have an engineer. None of his plans are engineers. Yeah, uh huh. Doesn't have an engineer. Someone and they don't make it and they don't make her do it. Yeah, well, that's, that's, right, right, yeah, Jesus, you got it. Absolutely. Still, I want, still let them do it for him right now. Pretty slick. Uh huh, yeah. Comes to the landing board after you go to the building. Unless they actually have one. Here's my neighbor. Oh, that's fine. Totally fine. That's fine, that's fine. I gotta go do mine too. I'm watching the street. I wanna, I'm 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 going to Lincoln, I'm to Lincoln, I'm my. Oh, okay, yeah, that too. Yeah, 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 yeah. That's fine. But I gotta, I gotta do my, I gotta do my block cabinet visits, yeah. I can't, you guys.
Can you repeat what you said? Can you repeat tying, you're tying, then you get two downspouts into one drain. Then it's going down along the driveway for quite a while to driveway to the hop.
Mr. Artie, one other way, just some more. And now you're still typing, so I'll try to set my hand. Okay, so this is uh the application for minor subdivision that also requires variance relief and design waivers. There were some quite specific waivers which the board's professionals have supported granting. Um variance relief relates to, well, the applicants provide a testimony as the number of parking spaces that variance relief um is required. For um the onsite parking for new places um and dependent to parking the front yard. It says to the side yard setback for proposed lot sixty five point oh three to permit twelve point three.
I think you said twelve.
Twelve was one.
No, no, when you said you had it surveyed and the mention is twelve, because I had it neuralized and it was twelve, and it's twelve nine. It was right, so that's what you said.
Okay, I was reading.
They might have to actually survey this.
So I was looking at lot sixty five point oh three and it's five to maybe. So one I have now is twelve point nine and one is twelve.
Yeah, the codes. Okay, sixty five, so that's what the variance.
Twelve feet or twelve point six?
Twelve, just.
Sixty five, right?
Yeah, you want to have a survey, yeah, it's the real numbers, twelve.
Okay, I hope you don't like that, right?
Uh the other one's.
Okay, I was misunderstanding your letter then.
Well, the the it's a thirty foot wide, our three percent of your backyard. So this one's a little bit wider, so that's why it requires a twelve point nine foot.
Right.
Side yard. So in the back, you know, I think the last thing was twelve foot or didn't. But they actually let it survey and that is twelve. So that's what the variance.
It's a boat off.
Right, that's what I.
Maybe you'll.
Twelve feet, it's required, variance relief is required, boat off.
Yeah, and.
Yes.
Six five oh two, you only just added two.
So that one is conforming because it's at twelve feet. But a variance is required for sixty five point oh three because twelve point nine would be required. And then it's twelve. The front yard depth is um compliant as the lock, minimum lock depth that's provided by the testimony. Um waivers, design waivers required for the off-street parking area, which then would have required front yard. Um the design waiver for the six foot wide buffer as the proper one, which is a tactical because you've got a difference. And as the location exists in the building, they'd agree to add um bulk requirements. Since that will um show the compliance with the um amount of green space, which is um is thirty percent there under the waivers. Um and then they've agreed to other changes such as they've applied two downspouts to, sort of put in the trench. Now it's like, yeah, two. And follow up to the street to alleviate drainage and will plant grass along that edge of the side yard that's next to the neighbor's property at thirty Church Street to alleviate ponding and the migration of soil. Um so they're required to provide equal housing configuration. Um provide updated survey, sidewalk permitting applications to be incorporated from your view of plans. Um by the board's engineers will provide an updated survey. Um bill dress comment number sixteen about the milling and completed areas that will be verified by the extension here as to the paving. Um we'll ensure um to agree to install concrete curbs to protect the driveway, provide protective drainage. Um.
I see it as well. Thank you.
I see it.
I see it as well. It's well.
Yeah.
Plus curve.
And um they're gonna provide updates to the plans as discussed in Mr. Lino's letter. And so that you can, the board's engineer can verify the slip for the sidewalk. Um is less than two percent. Um and then if they can't meet that maximum, I guess they'll modify the concrete and the apron will work with the board's engineer on that.
Two percent contained to the driver.
Yeah, well, I mean the side, the sidewalk has to have two percent too. Doesn't have, that's shown on the plan, the actual plan, it said the concrete sidewalk has two percent maximum also.
I think there's a note on here now, but we'll.
Um the applicant uh talks about the tree replacement and he's gonna replace the trees. He's gonna work with um board's planner on the species and the installation of the utility lines. Um they've acknowledged that there's a six foot area in the sidewalk next to the driveway, they've agreed to replace that and the second driveway. Um they've agreed to contribute to the town just tree preservation fund for the removal of the trees. And as part of that, they'll contribute the common things for the three trees that were already removed. It's provided information as to lock debt from the percentage of coverage. Um they'll provide the, they'll accomplish the subdivision by deed, which will be um reviewed as along the major descriptions. And there's a number of these comments as stated during the hearing. Anything else that I, that's what you want to add?
Um not to beat it up too much, but the um this issue about the side yard setback, I'm looking at the plan. And it looks to be on third corner, lot sixty five oh two, that is the mention here is real eleven point eighty. So.
But I think you only need a side yard ten point two.
So even if it's left way, it's still.
Yeah, cause it's not as wide, the other one's wide, that's a good problem.
Yep, absolutely.
They've agreed to add certain um notes to the plans as the beginning of the board's call had in both professional review letters. Um with the design waiver for the lighting because it's residential area, but don't need to verify one foot handle. What update the comment needs to, the comment needs to, the um parking spaces don't need to be twenty by ten feet because it's residential area. Only a waiver for curbing or car stops or interventions for the turning movements that have to be shown because it's a residential area. Looking at number eight. Um the address number nine is to the address term. And comments ten through sixteen, potential to be completed. Seventeen, um eighteen through twenty-two, fourteen, four, twenty-five. So based upon that, I mean, the applicant has presented testimony to the subdivision, which will be by right. But because of this variance relief and the design waivers, they provide a testimony that they're willing to work on the design waivers. Also that some of the variance relief is um based upon the existing conditions. It's an object shaped lot, which had built in a lot of parts certainly. Um so you, the more they find, that's just a reason for the variance, so is their motion on the application. Subjects will all be findings and conditions as stated.
Very much.
Support the motion to remove subjects and findings and the conditions.
Same.
Will call please? Mr. Sossiak?
Yes.
Mr. Vines?
Yes.
Mr. DePaco?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Adler?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Stafford?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Also, your question was, that eleven point eight, they have a little long.
Right. Right.
Thank you for coming in. I'm gonna reopen this up to regular public comment. Consistent with the open public meeting act, members of the public are invited to submit comments during the public comment portion of the meeting. The board reverse the right to limit public discussion. Public discussion of the topic by two minutes speakers will be in three minutes. But each person of the party, no part of this pick may be more than one on the same topic as all others in this meeting. The public comment questions are not recorded, they are seen and shared among members of the board. Not matter if they are within the board's, the board needs public comment here. Um who may be resisting, it's in terms of. Public comment portion of the meeting is not a question of the interest section. The board may or may not respond to public comments as the time they are made and as I may allow me to do so. Not all issues brought before the board at meeting will be resolved at a particular meeting. Concerns raised or actions suggested by the public may be taken under by and by the board. Further review with discussion or to be acted upon at a later date or time. Or the issue may be referred to in appropriate. And please note that if a project or an application is not listed on the board's agenda for action, it may not be discussed by the board during the public comment portion of the meeting. If the applicant is not present, it does not have an opportunity to respond to the comments made by members of the public. Next row?
Well, you mean, and as soon as I pay, I live ninety-eight level drive. I just want super concerned about the Mahali Gardens, I'm rich, you know, it's the status of that project.
Not only agenda, but can't talk about it.
Okay, no, no information, thank you.
Michael Roth, no, thirty-three Ranch Street. Um I was very pleased to see um the planning board talk about the tree ordinance. And we're seeing the tree ordinance, I know it's something my wife wrote, she was chair of the environment department. Um and it's good to see that happening. Um I would note, when driving down Leonard's Drive, we saw eleven dead trees. And I note that, well, you actually talked today, you're talking about consulting with Mr. Blonte to plant appropriate street trees. I don't believe the developer of Leonard's Drive planted appropriate street trees. Um and especially the ladder dead. So I would ask if you can to go have the appropriate person look down and take a look at it. I believe they're still bonded. Um and maybe make them purchase some trees that are appropriate that will actually survive instead of the junk that they purchased. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want me to respond? Maybe, those trees are on bond and the bond hasn't been released.
Right.
And those are punchless, it's still created, so the trees will be replaced in accordance with policy.
Thank you very much. I'll let my wife know.
Anything?
Anything?
So we're not in talk, I think Kate's trying to question ahead. You can't talk about it.
They're not on the agenda.
Nothing on the agenda. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else in that row? Next row?
Hi, I'm about one hundred and fifty seven. Um I just had a question on whether we expect virtue to be here, something on whether they're canceled or anything. Do you know when they will be at a future meeting?
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion. Okay. Can I have any comments from the planner? Engineer? Comments from the solicitor?
So we, we need for special teams or review of. I'm about to miss an end and I can't do that. So the board secretary will be um circulating some dates, so just be able to look out for that, fill the forms, review that. That will be subject to public hearing. You'll probably notice it's still being um.
I think I might extend the, the paper, but I'll.
You sent some data. You said some data.
So I'll, I'll, I'm, I'm.
And you said that is a public hearing?
Well, yeah, we have to advertise again, so it's a full document that will be advertised and made available.
And I always.
Yeah. Um, and then also, the, uh, the, uh, school board did, legitimately submit a, um, a design plan for cattle projects, which is, uh, requires that cattle projects consistently consistently renewed. It doesn't have to be noticed, but it's directed by the planners to the planner and the engineer, um, and for the board's made findings that those plans, you know, some picky tables or something, that, uh, exactly what it is. But it's, it's a minor plan review, um, and maybe asked for it to be done sooner rather than later, because they have a, they just realized they had a grant. That's, yeah. So, um, it will be on the list for a special week, I think, with a, yeah.
Did they ask for all this, oh, not the.
Well, they said before August.
Oh, before August.
Before August, because that's when they need, they have some. So. So, the board can say yes or no to that, um, but, you know, we appreciate the school board, because, uh, you know, school board was the one, I think, at the, it was the fall of school.
Who's Reader?
Reader?
Here with the. One of the schools.
She said one, I said one, it's a, it's a.
It was.
I'll look that.
Okay, that extends.
So you give the, uh, something down.
Just, just think with Kate's trying to, they're complaining about.
Thank you, everybody.